All right, we will go ahead and get started. Karen had another appointment and is running a little bit behind, so she'll be here shortly. I believe Tony and Jessica are both online. Can you guys hear us?
I'm here, yes, I can.
I can hear you.
Did you hear Tony? Tony, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can, thank you. All right, any questions about the agenda this evening? Tansy, any updates from you?
No, thank you.
Hammy, anything from you?
None tonight.
All right, we'll jump right into briefings, we got the Vision Zero Action Plan update.
Thank you, so Brett is gonna introduce this item. This has been an ongoing area of priority for the council in terms of traffic safety. We have our consultant here to walk us through the recommendations for the plan, and there will be a resolution on your agenda on December 17th accepting the plan, and with that, I'll give it to Brett.
Thanks, Tansy. So, folks online, Brett Henry, Director of Utilities and Infrastructure. Before we get into the Vision Zero, I just want to touch on a few items that are related, but not going to be in a specific presentation tonight about Vision Zero. One of them relates to the streetlight acquisition. You all probably remember that's been going on for the last several months with Excel. If the city determines that we do want to acquire the streetlight network and then convert it to LED, some elements of that that we could incorporate again if we wanted to, there'd be a financial cost, but doing photometric analysis on our roadways, this has come up on some recent accidents where there are questions of whether or not, you know, the roadways were adequately lit, so we could potentially factor that into that entire process if we wanted to. And then also doing, incorporating smart lighting and smart features within it as well, that some of that can relate to incidents avoidance reduction. So, that's something that we'll weigh and bring back to council consideration once we get to that point on the streetlights, which we're thinking should be sometime early next year, we're still waiting on the final numbers from Excel. The other piece I wanted to touch on, and we have Park Staff here as well, Bob and I were talking about how, and related especially nighttime visibility affects the lighting on the roadways, but as far as tree maintenance and such as well, so in older parts of the city, you can imagine there's some materials where the trees overhang and may block lighting. On a five-year rotation basis, Bob's staff goes through and Doug's staff goes through and looks at the streets and does an determining, bringing necessary again and make sure the trees are kind of trimmed back. In addition, Daryl's team goes through and also goes once a year and checks for streetlight algies or anything else, so we can report that to Excel, United Power, or obviously it's our own, we can take care of that. So, there's a lot of things that kind of go on outside of the specific Vision Zero stuff that I want to let you know that is already currently going on and being addressed. So, with that being said, I'll turn it over to Daryl and then Patrick Picard to talk about the Vision Zero presentation.
Thanks. So, Daryl Austin, Traffic Engineer for the city. Patrick Picard is with Barron Pierce, who's our consultant, helped us put together the action plan for Vision Zero. So, excited to present this plan. We're gonna give an overview of the plan that's being considered for adoption on December 17th at the council meeting next week. We'll cover briefly what has been zeroed, what the plan accomplishes, we'll step through several slides on how the plan was developed, about performance monitoring, and then what adoption actually does for the city. So, what is Vision Zero? It's an approach to addressing fatal and serious injury crashes that's a little different from your traditional approach, and that it takes into account the fact that people make mistakes, they're not perfect in their driving, and someone should have to die as a result of those mistakes. So, the action plan itself actually sets a target, aggressive goal of 2040 to eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes. So, what this plan accomplishes, as I just said, aggressive goal of 2040 is trying to eliminate fatal and serious injuries crashes, identifying actions to improve traffic safety. We're prioritizing actions where we believe the impact will be the greatest. We use a systemic approach to try and address the most common severe types of crashes. We identify priority projects through this plan, and the plan itself actually positions the city to be competitive for future grants. It's important to highlight that this action plan is in alignment with the Federal Highway Administration's Safe System Approach. And this approach attempts to address traffic safety through establishing safer people, safer vehicles, establishing better post-crash care, safer roads, and safer speeds. And the Safe System Approach is, it's really a framework that's commonly used in many action plans that you see in existence today. So, the plan development itself assisted of multiple steps. There was comprehensive safety analysis, traffic safety analysis, development of high-risk and high-injury networks, which I'll touch on in a bit, extensive public outreach, and development of a toolbox to apply towards common crash types, and an assessment of the impact of fatal and severe injury crashes on historically marginalized communities. And all these steps feed into the action plan, which the steps we're at now are in green in that box, the action plan and supplemental prioritization guide. So, to start diving into the crash analysis, so what we looked at was a five-year period from 2018 to 2022, to get an understanding of the magnitude of severe and fatal injury crashes. The analysis focused on city streets. Do not look at I-25 or E-470. C-DOS conducted their own safety analysis of I-25, and E-470 through their master plan updates conducts their own safety analysis. So, during that five-year period on city streets, 264 people were killed or seriously injured. Twelve of those people were walking, 29 were biking, and 223 were in vehicles. And so, this data alone illustrates the importance of having an action plan. We're trying to prevent people from being injured or killed. Hopefully, they can drive on city streets and travel without tragedy. And so, as you go deep into the crash analysis for that five-year period, we took the crash data and recreated what's called a high-injury network. And this network shows where fatal and serious injury crashes have occurred. And then, as part of the plan development, we developed what's called a high-risk network, which looks at severe crashes, where severe crashes are likely to occur based on common risk factors. When you combine these two networks together, what we saw was that 6% of the city streets account for 60% of fatal and serious injury crashes in the city. So, this network itself is the, basically the starting point for trying to prioritize where we go with this action plan. Further into the crash data, there's really four crash types that are responsible for the majority of fatal and serious injury crashes in the city. And those four crash types, pedestrian and bicycle-related, left-turn crashes, broadside crashes, then fixed object, which by fixed object, we also mean crashing vehicles leaving the roadway. If you look at the data that's on the screen, particularly the pedestrian and bicycle data, you'll see that pedestrian and bike crashes account 2% of overall crashes, but represent 18% of fatal and serious injury crashes. So, it kind of illustrates the importance of making sure we account for pedestrians and bicycles' safety in our transportation system. The next component of the plan development, public outreach. It's a critical piece for developing an action plan. It tells us where the public feels unsafe, or they think safety issues are impacting, or excuse me, where public feels their safety is impacted. We can't be everywhere at all times, and so we rely on public input to help guide us in developing this plan. And that extensive outreach was done in a variety of means. We conducted surveys, met with over 300 people at various city events. Open house we had back in June of this year. We've gone to farmers markets, and all the outreach and print publication was done, both English and Spanish. We feel substantial amount of public input from this plan. And so, as part of that public input, we asked the community what they thought the top three safety concerns were. And those three safety concerns were speeding, red light or stop sign running, and distracted driving. Those are the top three, obviously, on the screen. Then other concerns kind of filtered through the process, but the top three were in the mention. And then, as a result of that, we further asked what safety improvements were desired by the community, and it kind of centered around six themes. We're enforcing driving behavior, desire for more types of traffic control, traffic calming in neighborhoods and at schools, more pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and improving visibility at intersections. And all this public, or excuse me, all this public input helped guide the direction of the plan development. So, when we combined the analysis and the public outreach, we found that there's nine different crash types or profiles that represent 70% of fatal and serious injury crashes that are occurring in the city. Those crash types are the fixed object, left turns at signals, red light running, left turn and broadside crashes at unsignalized intersections, pedestrian and bicycle crossing against signals, pedestrian and bicycles crossing major streets at unsignalized locations, right turns on red versus pedestrians and bikes, and right turns on green versus pedestrians. And as I said, these nine crash types represent 70% of fatal and serious injury crashes. So, the plan addresses these profiles at locations where they're occurring, and also where they're likely to occur, try and get a systemic approach to addressing crashes. And as I previously mentioned, this is a starting point, or I think I previously mentioned, this is the starting point for the action plan. The plan will evolve over time, and so as we implement different countermeasures, these crash profiles based on the data may change. But this is the starting part for where we think we need to focus our efforts to have most impact. So, this slide, I don't expect you to be able to read it, but what I wanted to illustrate is, across the top of this, in the blue boxes are the nine crash profiles previously mentioned. Then along the left side, the vertical list is the list of countermeasures that are likely to impact those types of crashes. And so, this represents the toolbox that we've established to try and address those crash profiles. And so, as we work through the plan, each location that we're looking at, it'll need to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis against this toolbox. But this represents the core list of tools from Capital Standard. And so, we'll switch into some examples of how this works. So, for that, we have one example of a crash profile, one of those nine, which was left turn crashes at signalized intersections. And so, this crash type represents 15% of fatal and serious injury crashes. And as you step through the toolbox, there's three likely candidates for addressing that type of crash. Modifying left turn movement operation, shifting left turn lanes for visibility improvement, or getting into some technical options such as gap-dependent left turn flashing arrows. And so, as you go through, you look at a specific location, and you look at the crash type that's common at that location or has been occurring in that location, and you apply the toolbox and decide which of the countermeasures is likely to help. And so, in a real-world example, we have Fort Barkley and Huron Street, left turn crashes. And looking at signal operation, right now, we have protective permissive signal operation. And the question comes, do you need to go to the next step with flashing yellow arrows, or further beyond that, and completely prohibit left turns except on green arrows? And so, you apply your toolbox to the intersection and the crash type at hand. Another example, just real quickly, right turn pedestrian crashes at signalized intersections. So, this crash profile represents 1% of fatal and serious injury crashes. There's nine different countermeasures that are in the toolbox that could address it. You apply those countermeasures, in real-world example, 100th and Colorado, you can deploy leading pedestrian intervals to get your pedestrian out and moving before the green light starts, where you can tighten turn radius, slow turning vehicles, and shorten crossing distance, and reduce the pedestrian exposure. So, these two examples are just to try to illustrate how we need to step through the toolbox once we've identified a location and identified the list of countermeasures. Moving on, one of the efforts under the plan was to look at the impact of fatal and serious injury crashes on historically marginalized communities. And so, what we used was Dr. Cox's Equity Index, which is based on US Census data. And you can see in the image, it's, we overlayed our high-risk and high-injury network on top of Dr. Cox's Equity Index. What we found was 71% of fatal and severe crashes were in equity areas, despite equity areas only having 59% of the city's population. And we know areas of equity need, the residents have limited transportation resources. And so, this illustrates the importance of needing to invest in our pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure to help enhance safety for people walking and biking. And so, we took all this information that we have, as well as the Dr. Cox Equity Index and its impact, and again, this is a slide not intended to necessarily read, but to illustrate the matrix of the action plan. So, while capital improvement projects are likely to have the biggest impact, they're not the only component of the action plan. Capital projects, which is on that first line, only accounts for a portion of the plan we're going to implement under the Safe System Approach of safer roads, safer speed, safer people, safer vehicles, and post-crash care. Now, we have other elements to address those, some of them being policy changes in how we design our roadways. Probably the biggest thing that we have going, or will be having going, is the implementation of our interdepartmental safety team to fully implement the plan and make sure it follows through. And as an additional part of that, we also will be deploying a rapid response team, which will, when a crash occurs, a fatal or serious injury crash occurs, this team will meet as soon as possible, get a better understanding of the crash as close to when it happens as possible. The difficult part about assessing crash data a year or two later is that you lose context, and you can lose valuable information on what's actually occurring, and you're only relying on that crash report. We try to do it whilst fresh in our minds and get a better understanding, and help us better guide what countermeasures we need to employ. But overall, what the intent of this slide is, is to present that the action plan is not just capital projects, which is substantial amount that's going on, that this interdepartmental safety team will need to engage in to make sure the plan has the proper issue. So, we know we can't do everything at once from a capital standpoint. The supplemental prioritization guide was developed, and this establishes the starting point, establishes the starting point for where to implement our capital projects. And this guide was based on the benefit cost analysis for various crash countermeasures, public comments, the Equity Index as previously mentioned, and multiple crash history. And what resulted was 69 priority intersections that we want to start focusing on first. And the 69 intersections, 80% fall within equity priority areas, and 86% are on the high-injury and high-risk network. And so, like I previously mentioned, this is the starting point where we'll try and prioritize our efforts, where we think will have the greatest impact. And priorities may change as products, projects are implemented, or as needs are reevaluated. But this starting point will get us going and move us forward under the plan. In addition to the 69 intersections, we also established seven speed management corridors that are priorities. And these seven corridors, the intent is to address speed on the corridor, speed limit standpoint. Hopefully, redesign or design to encourage safer speed, and of course, enforcement components. And then, there are seven priority access management pedestrian corridors, where based on the data, we need to implement how we let vehicles enter and exit the corridor from driveways and intersections, and as well as establishing more suitable pedestrian crossings, particularly across our larger road crews. There's some overlap between these two seven corridor lists. But overall, from a corridor standpoint, based on the data, this is where we believe we need to focus our efforts. Another slide, a lot of words, I'll summarize, and what we're trying to say is we're addressing priority areas, and we're also trying to do crash reduction from a systemic standpoint. And so, basically, I said earlier, crashes, addressing them where they're occurring, and also where they're likely to occur, so we can have that systemic approach, and hopefully get towards that year of 2040 sooner. As we work through this plan, we'll be tracking priority projects that have been implemented, systemic safety improvements that have been implemented, implemented, and action items, those non-capital projects. And the outcomes that we'll be tracking are fairly simple. It's the number of fatal and serious injury crashes on our streets, pedestrian and bicycle-involved crashes on our streets, and then where those two metrics occur, the quantities within areas of high equity need. And the public-facing dashboard was just released today. So, you go to the Vision Zero website, and you can see it. And on it, it has three items, one is Crash Data Explorer, where you go in, and you can view crash data, and you can actually manipulate the data. You want to filter down based on cause of the crash, time of day, type of crash. It gives the end user the ability to, mobility to manipulate data to see different data sets as they want to see it. We have a separate map that shows the high-injury and high-risk network, as well as the equity areas, so it's apparent to public. And then, there's a third map, which contains an app and a list of action plan projects and action items. And it will show both completed and upcoming. And again, this is all to keep the public informed and be transparent about the crash situation where we're at, and what we have planned. So, by adoption, what this plan puts into motion is a commitment to addressing traffic safety, particularly across city departments. We're asking for city-wide approaches to do this. And that commitment, as I mentioned earlier, to achieving zero fatal and serious injury crashes by 2040, provides us a clear direction of trying to systematically mitigate crashes. And we're also directing efforts to where we think the impact and need is the greatest. As previously mentioned, it positions us for future grant opportunities. And so, our next steps, as previously mentioned, will establish the interdepartmental safety team, as well as a rapid response team. We'll review that priority type list and start picking low-hanging fruit. Low-hanging fruit, probably, there'll be some mindset. There's a lot of items that we actually already have going on. And if you go to that dashboard, you can see some of the projects that have been completed or upcoming that are identified in this action plan. So, we've actually already started some of the work. And then, we'll seek funding for future improvements, and we'll work on our policy-related items in terms of street design from both capital improvement and development side, as well as assessing our speeds on the seven corridors, those seven-speed corridors. And then, there are enforcement components. As you're aware, we're going to be piloting the photo enforcement, and then we've got education items that are identified and planned for public to try and bring awareness about the crash issue. And so, with this plan, we're hoping that council is willing to adopt it, and we'll open it up for any questions we may have.
Just a few questions on slide 20, or page 24 of the presentation. What is the development of the Safe Ride Home program, what does that look like?
It's a concept that needs to be investigated under the interdepartmental safety team. But initial thoughts were establishing some types of means to encourage people to not drive at home after drinking. I mean, it could be in the form of possibly a ride program, or voucher for providing that taxi service, or Lyft service, or something of that nature. But it's something that we had an idea, try and address the DUI crashes, and it needs to be further investigated under the plan.
I was just curious if that would be like in, like, would that be like with businesses where people are drinking in Thornton to make sure that they would have vouchers or rides?
Right, correct. And there's also another component in here, and you have to forgive me, I can't see the screen, where we're actually going to be investing some outreach to businesses in general about crash issues, and not just necessarily relates voucher, or the Safe Ride Home program.
And then, my other question, well, Justin and I were at a Latino forum yesterday, and we had a conversation, it was more about environmentalism, but Vision Zero came to mind for me because RTD, there was an RTD director there, and he was going on about roads need to be real straight for the buses. And I was like, yeah, and we're vision-zeroing now, and that's not the vision. So, it was kind of like, he was like, oh, thank you for bringing that up, because like, you know, we just think of buses, and I'm like, yeah, well, we're thinking of people dying on the streets and speeding, and... So, anyway, like, I was wondering, like, as this continues, is how, what is constant communication with RTD going to look like? Because they have a one-track mind, literally, and then we do, and just kind of thinking about that.
And so, public transit is part of that element of providing alternate modes, particularly in high-equity areas. And so, our discussions initially will involve around locations of bus stops. One of the trends that I frequently see is mid-block pedestrian crash not too far from the bus stop. And then, when you look at the position of the bus stop, it's a distance away from a signalized crossing. And so, our initial start is to look at our crossing, or excuse me, our bus stop location, and see if we can get some agreement with RTD about proper placement. That'll probably go a long way toward, long ways towards addressing those mid-block crashes, which is one of those nine profiles that I talked about earlier. And then, as we continue through the process, as other items surface from our coordination with RTD, that will adjust accordingly to, I think, the bus stop. Probably one of the biggest issues we have right now.
Is like a micro-transit system within Thornton part of that discussion, or any thoughts, or, I know it's expensive, but...
Not initially, to be honest, we hadn't considered the micro-transit component of it. Particularly when you have a micro-transit, it's you're closer to where the person is, as opposed to someone having to go to a bus stop. So, the micro-transit is more of a direct service. So, we hadn't really considered that component of, you're about to...
Yeah, I was just gonna say to that concern, that the sort of disconnect of RTD wanting straight roads, and obviously having some, call it horizontal deflection, but curvature in the roads can help slow vehicles down, I think that's what you're getting at. And I think what RTD, I don't think RTD would be opposed to having curvatures in the road. It's more, if the road ends up being kind of roundabout, or you have to make lots of turns to get where you're going. So, I think you can have both, but it definitely...
He definitely brought up with Brumfield, he was like, Brumfield's crazy. And I was like, oh, we kind of like that, I don't, I mean, I like it, so I don't, you know, it was just kind of thinking, it was just people from different parts of government thinking about these things, and I thought it was an interesting polarity. Jessica?
I have a question along that as well. I see that there's a lot of carrots on here, and I guess it's, you know, sort of looking at one lens of it. On the opposite side, are we going to do any kind of advocacy on higher fines or even more jail time? When I think about other countries, especially in Europe, and obviously, they have a much more accessible transit system, but the drunk driving is not as, not as much as it is here, because they really hammer that point to those people when they learn to drive, and the fines are pretty astronomical. Are we going to do anything to try to advocate that on the state level?
So, I'll jump in for, Daryl, the next time we come back on your legislative priorities and agenda, we'll make sure that we're prepared to address how that is addressed or not, if there's a gap in terms of your legislative priorities.
I don't know if it's a priority, but it should go hand-in-hand with this specific slide. I would think if we're going to have resources for safe travel home, you know, there's also got to be sort of a stick for the people that are driving drunk in the first place. So, I'm not sure it's a priority, but if there's somebody on the state level running a bill, if we can tie it to Vision Zero, it seems to make sense. So I'm not sure it's a priority, but if there's somebody on the state level running a bill, if we can tie it to Vision Zero, it seems to make sense.
I think, I think it's a good point.
And as part of the plan, in the enforcement and education section, we're also looking at matching fines with safety outcomes. Make sure we review our fines, make sure they're appropriate for appropriate fractions. And then there are enforcement priorities that will be discussed with our police department. And as well as looking at our existing laws regarding vehicle safety. So I think that might address some of what you're talking about.
Do you think, is there, are we able to do that just city specific additional fines on drunk driving within the city? Or is that just state level fine or county level?
That would be a good question. I'm not sure. I think we'll have to investigate that as part of the, the action plan from or that interdepartmental safety team.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have to look at it too in legal. So I'm not, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
And I'm Justin and then Roberta.
Regarding the enforcement side of this, the so what, at what point in this plan or in the process do we start to establish you know, goals or targets in terms of enforcement specifically around speeding and red lights and how can we determine? At what point can we start to determine the, the resource needs, whether we need to increase the number of officers in traffic or try to hire more officers or whatever to meet the goals that are laid out in this plan? When is that? So make sure that we have enough people out there to do this.
Yep. So as part of that departmental safety team, excuse me, interdepartmental safety team, you'll have a two-pronged approach. One is redirecting our enforcement efforts to try and hit those seven priority corridors because there's seven of them from a speed standpoint. And then as part of that, the second approach is to look at you know, where does the police department need to expand? So I guess to answer your question, it's going to be part of that development of, or excuse me, it's part of the implementation action for that team to really assess where the deficiencies are in the ability to conduct enforcement.
And will we be setting, do you anticipate setting specific like percentage increases in certain citations? Like increasing it like the logic that I think most people understand is if I'm more likely to get a ticket in Thornton, I'm going to slow down when I'm in Thornton. And I think all drivers respond to that. I've seen it happen in Northgliffe and just about anywhere else where you start getting tickets and you start changing your behavior. So how does that, how do, how do we goal set on that? I think this is a case where we actually want to see like a percentage increase in violations because that doesn't necessarily mean there's more speeders out there. It means we're catching them.
I can't speak to the police department for advertising of their resources. So if, so if they want to establish the metric for increasing the number of violations, they would have to commit to doing that. I can see your point in establishing that. Again, like you said, you've seen in other communities where then people don't start to understand, you know, you can't speed important. And so we'll take that information and digest it. I would expect over the course of 2025, that a lot of these metrics and a lot of these points that we're talking about are refined into a more defined action plan. So this action plan itself establishes a framework and then it's our responsibility to then go in and refine it, establish more of those metrics.
Okay. And then on this slide up here, do you think that adding like a, a public like outreach campaign, whether it's through those temporary signs or printing bumper stickers to give out to you know, residents who are really concerned about like that kind of not like survey taking outreach, but more like broadcasting communications plan. So will the communications team be a part of this interdepartmental effort?
Yes, they will be. We've kind of started some of that already. We're going to be gearing up for some public outreach in terms of we're coordinating with E470 on use of their message boards to try and broadcast safety messages. As well as use of our own internal boards and message boards with those trailers on the road that can display messages. But also as part of the plan, when we implement the safety item, the intent is to work with communications, which will be part of the team to broadcast messages, social media advertisements on safety improvements that we've done, to bring awareness about that safety improvement. And so communications will be part of the team.
I just go back to the, to the police speeding enforcement, the, the plan does identify, what it does give the police toolbox is here are, here are the priority corridors, identifies priority corridors for where speed enforcement is likely going to have the greatest impact. So if you're going to direct resources and increased enforcement, which there are recommendations related to that in here, those are the provides a framework of where to start with that.
Roberta? Oh, I was just wondering like, it's been a long time since I've seen any like, what do you call those things? The stops for drunk driving? Checkpoints, yeah. Like, I guess I, I know you probably don't know because it's police stuff, but like, how often are we doing those throughout the year?
That is a good question. I don't know. Chief, if you want to jive in.
Do you want to have that addressed tonight or do you want to have that addressed in your next public?
That's totally fine. Cause I was just thinking like, I haven't seen it in a really long time, but maybe it's just that I don't go through them. Last time I was stopped was like when my son was like probably seven. But you know.
I'd have been a quick email update would be.
That would be great. Yeah. I'm just curious like when we do them and how often they're happening.
And I know the alumni association used to participate with the county and the Thornton Police Department on those. I've done that.
Yeah. Cause I haven't seen any of them come up in the volunteer stuff, Jessica. That's why I was.
Yeah.
I'll work with the chief. We'll get a interim update. And then the next time I think you'll have another public safety update, I think in in late January or February, and we'll be prepared to address in greater detail at that time.
We've had some decent discussion around the impaired or alcohol related incidents, but I didn't see any type of percentages or breakdowns of those serious crashes. How many of those are alcohol related or do you have that dated as well?
We'd have to go in and filter it out unless you have.
I, I don't have the specific number, but it's pretty, it's pretty universal. Almost anywhere. It's typically around 30%. And it, it, it can vary, obviously slightly, give or take. So don't quote me on that number, but it's typically around 30%.
Other questions? So this is going to come to us next week?
That's right.
So as an action item next week, we will do a shorter presentation for council. It won't be all these slides. I think it was seven or 10 slides. But just enough in case the public's listening, they can get a feel for what's going on and where to find the information.
Thank you. The next item is the business improvement grant.
And this is a follow-up to a prior council discussion on the business improvement grant. And so staff will walk through some work that the BTEC did in terms of reevaluating some of the processes that he's, they'll hit on some short-term recommendations and then some long-term, longer-term processes that the BTEC will continue to engage in.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for the intro and good evening. Appreciate your time tonight as always. Adam Krueger, Economic Development Director. I want to introduce some of the other team members we got here tonight. To my left is Jenny Leon, our Small Business Manager, who maybe you guys know. To my right is Carla Quarter. She's our executive assistant. She does a lot of the administration and the processing of the business improvement grant. So her, that was a great, a real great resource for how that process works. We also have with us a couple of, of members of BTEC tonight. Jamie Klein, if you don't mind, there we go. And Omar Moreno, here from BTEC to answer any questions that might come up from the BTEC side of things. So we did want to follow up from our meeting in October, council requested, we have a discussion with BTEC about business improvement grant program. And so we brought tonight's information on the history of, of the program, how the process works, kind of from soup to nuts, start to finish. And then discussion we had in November with BTEC. So I'm going to turn it over to Jenny to start the presentation.
Okay. So we're going to give you an overview just of what the grant is and the history of it. And then BTEC at our November meeting did have a pretty lengthy discussion about the grant. And so we have a recommendation and then another request. So BIG in 2009, council charged BTEC with creating the BIG program. And over time, the program has evolved. In the beginning, the grants were mostly reviewed and approved by staff and then got a final okay by BTEC. In 2018, we implemented a scoring rubric and also an annual program services budget was established. And then now staff prepares the application packets and does all the behind the scenes work. And then we send that to BTEC in their monthly agenda packet and they during the meeting review and approve those grants. BIG is available to help fund businesses with interior and exterior improvements and capital investments. It is a 50/50 reimbursement program. And all qualified businesses are scored according to the program's scoring rubric. Fun, big funding allows for a maximum of $20,000 every five years. Overview of the grant process. This grant process is pretty staff heavy. What happens is that an application is submitted on our website and a copy of it and notice comes to me and to Carla and we get a copy of all the stuff that they submitted. Then it's put on a tracking sheet and Carla checks with all the different departments to check their eligibility. Do they have a business license? You know, do they have any code issues? Are they current on their taxes, things like that? So when we establish that the packet is complete, it goes then to BTEC in their next their next meeting agenda package. So something that might make it incomplete is maybe they didn't sign their W9 tax form or maybe they forgot a receipt or an invoice for something. And so Carla works with them to get all that information. And so it doesn't go to BTEC until it's complete because we don't want to sit there and approve grants that we don't have all the stuff. And then they don't have all the information that they need to make a good decision. So there's two different tracks that an applicant can take with their grant application. So for example, let's say a business wants to put a patio at their restaurant. And they really want to do it, but they don't, if they don't have some financial assistance, they're not going to do it. So they would submit for pre-approval. They would get bids and in, you know, they would get bids for the project. They would submit that and then they could get pre-approved and then they could do their project. If they get pre-approved, they have four months to start their project. And that's so that if they decide not to do it, they're not holding those funds for the whole year that another business could get. Or if they're going to do the patio anyway, but it would just be nice to have some help. They will go ahead and do the project and then they can come back. They have 12 months to submit all their invoices, permits and things like that. And then they can get reimbursed up to 50% of what they spent of the eligible expenses. So after BTEC approves the grant and we've got everything that we need, all the receipts, staff issues, a check request. And then they get their money. But a couple caveats there is that if it's not completed in the current calendar year, we usually encourage them to pull their application so that they can reapply the next year and not lose out on that money. And then if there's someone on a waitlist, then the next business on that waitlist would get that money after they pull their application. And then grant applications are reviewed annually, annually by finance for completeness. So we're missing, we're missing a.
All the grant process.
Yeah.
We get to talk to it.
Yeah. So the timeline of the grant process is that early January, the, the application window opens. And July 31st approximately, depending how the calendar falls, the grant supplemental window closes. And like I said, if they get pre-approved in that time, they have four months to start their project. November 1 is the deadline to start pre-approved projects. And that is because in early December is the deadline to have all receipts and proof of payment and all the stuff that we need submitted so that by mid-December, we can submit a check request to finance. And because they have to have their checks and stuff, their process is done in mid-December in order to get it on the current year's budget so that it doesn't spill over into the next fiscal year. Okay. So some of our main stats for the, from 2014 to 2023, on average, we give about 20 grants. We have very few applications that fall below the minimum score. If they do fall below the minimum score, it might be because they have a weak application. Maybe they didn't get much explanation as to the project or why they feel, you know, they would benefit from the grant. Or potentially maybe a really large business. For example, if Amazon ever wanted to apply, they're welcome to apply. But the spirit of the grant is not necessarily for that large of a business. It's more for businesses that we feel $20,000 would be more impactful for. So that it might just, it may not score as high. That doesn't discount them from getting the grant. It just means they wouldn't get as good of a score probably. We on average have about four grants that are pulled or ineligible each year. A pulled means they have requested or we have suggested that they pulled their application, that they don't go forward in the grant process because they're not, they're not going to meet requirements for the year. They're not going to get their project finished. And then if they don't pull it, then they won't be eligible next year. So we want them to pull it so they can apply again. Ineligible means maybe they don't have a sales tax license. Maybe they forgot they just got the grant two years ago and they're not eligible. That, something like that. On average, we don't have any businesses left on a waitlist. They're either pulled or encouraged to reapply or they are, are reimbursed. They move up off the waitlist and give their money. And then the average amount left over at the end of each year is 63,100. That is because some projects at the very last, like last week, we had two projects or two applications get pulled and they were holding $40,000. Or maybe we had one get approved for $20,000, but really all they qualified for was $5,000. So that is the discrepancy at the end of the year.
Just a one quick point on that. We allocate pretty much all of this money every year. This is, this is the what doesn't necessarily get spent because of the various reasons that Jenny just mentioned. So there's a difference between the allocation and then the actual money that that gets spent.
Yeah, we had two on a waitlist and then. And then just within the last month or so, once we saw that they were, we were going to have extra money, then we reached out to them. And then they were able to get, one was pulled and one got their money.
Quick question, the money that isn't spent at the end of the year, does that roll over to the next year? Or we, we do zero-based budgeting, so it goes back into the general fund?
Back to the general fund.
Okay, so like I said, in November, BTAC had a really good conversation about the program. However, because we have six new people, it's almost half the group. They were not comfortable in making many large changes to the program. And existing people were, without feedback from the new people, were also not comfortable in making a lot of changes or recommendations. We did make one recommendation and that would be to increase the eligibility time for recent star recipients to 24 months versus the current 12. That is because if you're a star grant recipient, you could get $15,000 this year. And then next year, you could turn around and get another 20 from the BIG program. And considering that a lot of new, like about 25% of new businesses fail within their first couple of years, we think that that would mitigate a little bit of the risk that the city could be taking by giving a brand-new business another, an additional $20,000 within their first two years.
Just as a quick reminder, the STAR grant is for new businesses in the South Urban New York area. It's the only place that it applies. And obviously the Business Improvement Grant Program is for businesses that have been around for one year. So we're just trying to avoid kind of the back-to-back grants over time. That was the, that was the discussion.
Sorry. And then I guess sort of a recommendation or request is that the, that BTAC would like to use the 2025 grant season to reevaluate the scoring rubric and process for implementation in 2026. So for example, they would like to evaluate the scoring rubric. Should the minimum score be increased? Does the footprint size of businesses need to be considered? Do we need multiple application periods? Should grants be compared, scored against each other? Or should it be first come, first served? There's a lot of things that they would like to discuss and reevaluate and bring those suggestions back to you probably next August or September. Once, once our new people have seen a full grant season and then had time to sit and chat and evaluate and come up with meaningful changes to the program.
I will say, just, just to piggyback on that, you know, the discussion at the November meeting was, was very good. I thought BTAC was very engaged on potential and changes and was always looking for ways to do things better. It's important to keep doing that. But with the new folks, as Jenny mentioned, she did a good job of summarizing it. And, and it's a pretty, pretty important program and pretty, pretty well utilized, as you saw from the statistics. We want to make sure that, you know, we don't do have any unintended consequences by, by trying to implement something too quickly. So that was one of the, one of the components, I think, one of the reasons for the recommendation to give a little bit of time, particularly for some of the new folks, since we have so many and then come back. So, sorry Jenny.
That's okay. Yeah, that's it. So our next steps would be to get approval of the additional stipulation for star recipients. And then to continue discussion of the program and in 2025 and come back to you guys next, probably third quarter. And then have any, you know, incorporate any feedback and questions and things that you guys.
Any questions from counsel? Justin?
Yeah. They, I don't know if I, questions, I think it looks, good presentation, thank you. My, I do have a couple of suggestions for the, that reevaluation process. And just questions are great, but I would suggest adding some like, no. Just being thoughtful or adding some statements on how we're going to answer those questions. Like, should the minimum score be increased? So, you know, how, how are we going to determine whether it should be increased? You know, do we have, I think you, you hit on it a little bit with some of those, those metrics earlier saying, I don't know, so-and-so, you know, always the average score is this and we've got this many businesses that are, are under the score. So, so I just like, you know, suggest using those similar types of metrics and answering those questions. And then the only other suggestion would be to just add another question on there would be, should we add, remove, or change some of the questions on the rubric?
Yeah, no, that's great feedback. I think that's, that's certainly something that we, we will want to be looking at. The rubric was, is really not that old, 2019 is when we started using the rubric, which I think has been really helpful. But things got to improve and change and over time, we've had enough time to look at it and review it and see what's working. So.
Yeah, it's, you know, five or six years, I think is a good time period to just take a look at, at the rubric and just ask ourselves, is it working? Can we modify it here, there, make it better? And yeah, so it's a good, it's a good time, good timing for that.
That's good feedback, thank you.
Any other questions? Any objection to the request?
Just for clarity purposes, the, the recommendation then of the two years between, you guys are supportive of that?
That was my last question, any objections to that? All right, I'm not hearing any objections. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You.
All right, and next item on the agenda is appointing members to TAF.
Members of the Parks Team here to update you on the priorities that have been recommended and then to give you an opportunity to select some additional committee members. This will come back to you as two separate resolutions on December 17th, assuming we get direction today. So I believe I'm giving the floor to Jalen.
Marisa.
Okay.
Good evening, counsel, I'm Marisa Blanco and I am the Community Connections Coordinator that administers the Thornton Assistance Funds. And this program is the program that supports nonprofit organizations with grants in order to assist Thornton residents with housing, health, food, medical, and human services. Thank you for this opportunity to present the applicants for the 2025 Thornton Assistance Funds Committee. So the purpose of this presentation tonight is for counsel to provide direction on which candidates would like, you would like to formally appoint to the committee and the priorities that the committee will consider when developing a nonprofit funding recommendation for 2025. Both of these will be part of the resolution that will be coming before you on December 17th. Our agenda for tonight is to briefly review the history of TAF, the staff recommended process, the committee member discussion, council priorities, and next steps. So the history of TAF, the Thornton Assistance Funds Program was established in 1983. Funds are distributed to service or charitable organizations that help residents meet their basic needs and enhance their ability to be self-sufficient. Basic needs are seen as food, housing, health, medical, and human services. This year, we have $307,800 to distribute to eligible applicants. The TAF Committee will review the applications, interview each eligible organization, and then develop their funding recommendation, recommendation for a counsel to consider. So in your counsel communication, we have outlined the recommended process for identifying committee members for formal appointment on December 17th. Five to seven committee members may participate on the TAF Committee with representation across all four wards per the bylaws. Four committee members will return in 2025 to continue their two-year term. Those members are shown on the screen. Staff is recommending counsel select three additional committee members to serve alongside the existing four. This will allow as many qualified residents to participate as possible. Historically, counsel members select a candidate from their respective wards. As such, staff is recommending the following. Ward three counsel members identify a ward three committee member for appointment next week. And then two additional candidates from any ward may be appointed by city council. We received a total of 16 applications for the 2025 TAF Committee. We summarized the candidates on the chart on the screen with the first column showing the name of the candidate, the second column indicating whether the candidate has served on TAF previously, third column shows their ward of residents, their, the fourth and fifth column indicates if the candidate has financial or human services work experience. All the applicants are qualified to hold a position as a TAF Committee Member. If counsel approves our recommendation process, we can begin that now. So counsel members, I'm Ryan Anacunto. There are eight candidates from Ward Three. So would you guys like to select a candidate to serve on the committee?
Tony wants to go first. Excuse me. I don't know, had a chance to speak to Tony about it, but Clay Carlson for me.
Go ahead, Tony. We can't hear you if you're talking.
Can you hear now?
Now we can.
Okay, my first recommendation would be Clay Carlson and second recommendation would be Kathy Williams.
What? Yeah, so it looks like you're both for Clay on your appointment? Okay. So it looks like Clay.
Carlson, thank you. So now that we have the recommended candidate to fill the Ward Three vacancy and because we can have up to seven committee members participate, would counsel as a whole like to select the additional candidates? These two vacancies may be from any board.
All right, Chris.
When I read the candidates' backgrounds, I liked Mr. Fletcher Brown in Ward Four.
Any objection? All right, it looks like Fletcher will be one of them. Should we go with, oh, go ahead, Justin?
Just a quick procedural question. We often have interviews for boards. Why do we not do that for this board? Is there a reason why?
I don't believe there is a reason why I asked the same question. So I think this board has just, it's not a board, a standing board in the same way. It's a short-term appointment and it does this kind of very narrow ask. I think this has been historically the way the candidates have been brought forward to the council. Certainly, if you wish to revisit that for either this selection process or future selection processes, we, we can certainly support the council on something different. But my understanding is this has been historically how this board has been handled.
Okay.
This one is a little odd compared to the others because we've never done interviews. We usually just read the application packet and each ward picks somebody. And then usually the mayor picks somebody and then the council as a whole picks somebody. But we have to make sure that they follow the specifics, the requirements. So one has to have financial, one has to have human resources. And a lot of times we reappoint the people that have served before because it's a very hard committee to be part of.
They're working for us from their kickoff meeting, which starts in February, usually at the beginning of the month, through about April or May, attending usually about seven weeks of interviews with the nonprofits. So as Tanzi mentioned, it's pretty short-term.
So it's like a standing committee, but counsel didn't create it like it would have a board. It's long-term and has certain duties and you appoint to each year, yeah. You could certainly convert it, but.
Well, part of it is because we changed the purpose, well, the purpose is the same, but the focus can change each year. And so it was set up specifically to be a one and done, like this group comes in, looks at these focus areas and then they're, they're finished and then we would reappoint for next year's focus areas. Not wrong or right, that's just how we've always done it.
No, I just wondered what was going on with that and I don't. I'm not going to say all the boards should have the same process because that, I don't know, that doesn't make sense either. So nobody wants to change it. I don't know if I even want to, I just wondered why.
Roberta?
Oh, are we picking another one for as a local council? Okay, well, I mean, because we only have one for Ward Two right now, correct?
Let me, and one for Ward Three. Oh, yeah, because we, they just picked Clay for Ward Three.
Okay. Well, I was just going to say, if we could have another one in Ward Two, given that it is more of a high-need area, we only have one candidate though, so that would be my suggestion. And she's been on the, on it before.
Any objection?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the name.
That'd be Sarah Tidwell.
Isn't she automatically on it to cover each ward?
No, Rebecca Burner is the Ward Two person.
Oh, I didn't see her on there, I don't know how I missed that.
Because she's on the list right before, not the application, the new candidates on the existing.
Okay.
So everybody okay with those choices, Sarah Tidwell for Ward Two and Fletcher Brown for Ward Four and Clay Carlson for Ward Three. Any objections? All right.
The other thing that we'd like to bring before counsel tonight is a discussion about the priorities, which you would like for the committee to consider as they're developing their recommendation for 2025. When our 2024 TAF Committee came before counsel earlier this year, they said, hey, we'd like to offer a suggestion about what counsel could consider as the priorities. And in order to form that, we want to look at the number of referrals that are made by Community Connections. So a referral is any response to a request for service. For example, if somebody says, I need housing supports and we provide information about five different nonprofits that can offer those supports, that counts as five referrals. In the chart on the screen, you can see our most common referrals ranked by volume are housing, followed by food assistance, homeless assistance, human services, and then health and other related. In 2023, the number of referrals that we made to each of those categories is listed, followed by year-to-date, which is through the end of October, referrals, and then the percent increase. Based on this chart, the committee said, this is how we want to prioritize our nonprofit applications for assistance, exactly according to the volume of referrals that you're making. Thank you. So their recommendation is for counsel to consider prioritizing applications for assistance in the following rank of priority, housing and homelessness, food, health and medical, and human services. The committee said, it's also really important that counsel consider accessibility and the percentage of residents served. So for accessibility, they would like to award extra points or prioritize applications within each of those four categories that focus on accessibility. For example, they provide services by delivery or in-home services or they have a location within Thornton or along a bus route. They also want to look at percentage of residents served compared to the overall population, the overall number of people served by the organization. by the organization. So we'd like to hear council's thoughts on those priorities. And then we can bring forward a resolution at the December seventeenth meeting, appointing the individuals that you've named tonight. And the resolution affirming the priorities as outlined by the committee. Or council can make changes to the recommendation regarding the priorities and we'll bring that forward.
Are there any questions about the priorities that were brought forward? Is there any objection? Oh, go ahead.
A a couple of things, actually, so for the housing and homelessness, I don't understand on those referrals. Um, what did you say that the number of, so let's say we're dealing with a homeless um referral? Um, homeless assistance, what does that mean, number of referrals? Is it the same individual multiple times? Is it that many more individual, unique um referrals? Can you explain that a little more?
Sure, this does not represent unique individuals. It represents the number of organizations to which somebody is referred. So in the example of homelessness, if an individual presents in need of shelter and we refer them to five different shelters, that would show up five times in the referral section.
A one person who gets five referrals is now five. That's that is a number of five increase in that. I I guess I don't understand, we're gonna focus on nonprofits that provide shelters outside of the city, how are they gonna get there? Does that include transit to getting to those places?
The recommendation was to focus on housing and homelessness proposals for funding and then also consider the accessibility. So having a location in Thornton would be something that they look at.
But we don't have any, right?
In that particular case, we do not have shelter in Thornton, right? So the organization that works in homelessness outside of the city would not get those accessibility points unless they were doing mobile services, for example, reporting to encampments.
Okay, and then housing referrals would be what? I I'm just asking because I see this chart and I see that we have number one prioritization is housing and homelessness. Both of those are really not city resources, generally speaking, especially we don't have a shelter, we don't have those res, that's really a county. So then I see food, which we know is a huge number. Health and medical, again, kind of that county, human services county. And then when we have homeless people, I don't know how we give them a resident pers- a a point towards resident either, how do we know? It I I don't see that as necessarily serving our Thornton residents in the best manner, giving homeless people money that don't live in the city or that are going to be relocated outside of the city. So I'm just trying to figure out if they don't have access to the shelter, they don't actually live in the city or have an ability to prove residency. Neither one of those points are going to be awarded. So is that really a priority? Is it ever going to show up as the higher scoring priority in the TAF um selection process, I guess?
Sure, it could, it based on what the TAF committee has outlined for you. It could, if they have mobile service provision, if a homeless service provider has mobile services, they could get accessibility points. And when we look at individuals experiencing homelessness, we're looking at where they spend most of their time. And if they're spending most of their time in Thornton city limits, then the organization could be awarded points for that as well. And then because housing and homelessness in this scenario is listed as the top priority, they would get priority points there.
It's not really a nonprofit in the city.
Correct, if you have an organization outside of the city that does not have mobile services, maybe it's just a shelter and they're serving everyone in metro Denver. Then they would rank lower in the prioritization based on what the TAF committee has outlined for you to consider tonight.
Okay, I I mean, I I get it, but it's also just doesn't really make sense at the same time.
This is only their recommendation, council can make changes.
Well, and it's giving money to the organizations, not to the people directly, so it's supporting services. I know housing has been an issue for a long time and it's not just finding housing, it's keeping people in their homes. And we have organizations around in in Thornton too that help with that, don't we?
We have organizations that serve Thornton residents. One of the more common ones that we fund is Almost Home and they don't have a physical location in Thornton. But they don't need it, they're helping people to pay their Thornton rent mortgage and utilities.
Would that go towards sort of uh also bill pay or anything else that helps them stay in housing or housing make? I I guess again, I'm not seeing the connection between that number one versus some of the other needs within our city, health and medical, for instance, or humans, what what are human services? That's a pretty broad category.
It is, it's a very broad category and it really serves as our catchall. If the organization doesn't fall into housing, homelessness, food, health, then they're considered a human service provider in general. And that's where we may see maybe, for example, um legal aid clinics. That could be where we see Center for People with Disabilities looking for equipment to help people with vision impairments.
And so what about the um older adults and senior adults, is that somehow separated out versus?
Not necessarily, because seniors could resonate through any of these four categories. There are programs for seniors that include housing, homelessness, food, health, medical, and human services. And the committee deliberately wanted to stay away from specific populations. So you'll notice they're not focusing on youth, they're not focusing on seniors, they're not focusing on veterans or people experiencing homelessness. They're saying everyone in Thornton needs assistance. And based on the types of referrals being made and the requests for assistance that are coming through community connections, we want to look categorically at the most frequently requested kinds of services.
Okay, that makes sense. I guess I just want to see a more broken down um what this actually means after this year, I guess, because it's it's I I would love to see how housing and homelessness can be benefited through some of these grants and what the numbers actually look like and what last year's numbers look like. Well, you know, in terms of how did we increase benefits for housing and homeless needs? I know how food looks because I know what that looks like in our city. Health and medical, I kind of have an idea what that looks like, I don't know what human services covers. So I guess that's why I have so many questions, I just don't really understand exactly what those specific benefits and actual resources are.
Okay, well, it could include rent, mortgage, and utility assistance. It could include um care for people experiencing homelessness, wound care, for example. Um, it could include short term transitional stays out of homelessness before somebody is placed in housing. So those are some examples that might fall into that first category of housing and homelessness. We've also funded in the past.
Committee has a big job.
It is.
They have a big job, so um it'll be, I'll be looking forward to their report this year.
Uh, Justin, then Roberta.
Um, so you know, a lot of organizations provide, you know, services in different fields. So um when we make an award, do we make an award for a specific program? Are we just awarding a an organization a grant, like a block of money to do whatever they they want?
They can request organizational support or specific program support.
And do we have a pri- like uh scoring priority on that? So our specific request, higher priority than lower than gen- general organizational support?
That has not been a part of our historical practice, no. I will say that most of the applications that come through are programs specific.
Okay, um. And yeah, I see that like you've combined housing and homelessness um versus in the other in the other chart, they're broken out into separate categories in in terms of referrals. So and what was the, is there like a benefit to combining those two categories versus having, for example, all five priorities that you listed in the in the referral uh chart?
The TAF committee saw these two as incredibly connected. And they wanted them to live together as a first priority.
Okay. Um. And so ex- like the accessibility and percentage of residents served, those are additional scoring criteria that do they happen within specific categories? They're not like uh they're like subordinate to the other categories you you pick. Housing and homelessness and then among all the housing homelessness's applications, you then rank those based off of, is it just those two categories or is there other ones?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yes, based off of all of the tier one housing and homeless applications, they would be reprioritized according to accessibility and percentage of residents served.
Is there anything else?
No.
And then tier one, what does that mean?
Category one or um priority one, I should have said, excuse me.
Okay, so there's not like a a another tier, so this is everything that goes into the model?
It is.
Roberta?
Oh, I was just wondering, just a quick question, um why health and medical is ranked three, but like on your chart here, it's like at the bottom. As far as like only six hundred and thirteen, but it's like a newer, a newer, a new, a newly tracked resource or yeah, resource, I was just curious why it was three and hu- and human services was four.
The committee decided that they wanted to prioritize health and medical over human services because the human services bucket is so broad and doesn't hit what they viewed as the priority, basic needs of the community. They wanted to make sure that um thinking about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, that we've got housing and shelter, we've got food and medical care, and then everything else would be next level.
Thank you.
Bottom prioritization.
Other questions? Is there any objection to the prioritization that has been provided for consideration? I think we all recognize that it's all a huge need, it doesn't matter what order we put it in, it's never gonna be enough. And it's it's gonna be a really hard job for TAF as always. So I think we're here in consensus on the priorities.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the citywide trail study update.
And Paula Schulte will be taking the lead on this presentation. We're not asking for any um action tonight or any feedback, so some of you will have heard about this um study through meetings you've been at. We wanted to make sure, Parks wanted to make sure that you had the project had more of a formal kickoff to make sure that everybody on the council is aware. So this will be a pretty brief presentation and and there'll be lots more to come as this work continues.
Right, so I'm Paula, I'm in the um Parks Projects and Planning Division of um the department. And um and it will be a very high level update and then I'm here to answer questions, any questions you might have. Oops. This one, here we go. So the goal of of the study is to take a comprehensive look at the whole trail system from trails to bike lanes, et cetera, and assess, do we need connections? Do we need more pedestrian underpasses? How are the amenities, what are the trail conditions? Are we meeting ADA compliance, et cetera, et cetera? The product that will be delivered will be a five-year um improvement prioritized list um that the consultants will get going and um will update the twenty fifteen trail users map. Um, the whole body of work will be an update in the update, will be a chapter in the updated Parks and Open Space Plan that's being worked on right now. So funding came from a a tip, federal tip grant um that was written in twenty twenty two. And we all know that takes a while to get that all worked out, but the city was awarded over one point five million, um which is lovely, lovely. Um, the consultant was on board in twenty twenty four and our first public meeting was in May at Anything Library on Huron. So the big part of their work um that's almost completed is data collection. And uh the consultant has been over every uh traversed every trail and bike path in the city. They've collected technical data on e-bikes that are GPS located and they have a camera that takes a picture every thirty feet or so, so they can see cracks, they can see, is there a crosswalk here, et cetera? And they've also been on regular e-bikes, looking at amenities from benches to dog waste stations to their shade there, is the curb feel, there's too much gravel on it, et cetera. Um, and it's all been mapped using artificial intelligence and and GPS. So um the other big part of their work was community engagement, we're pretty proud of that. Um, over fifteen events have been um people have been met uh where the people live, so to speak, that's what the expression they're using. From um concerts in the park to obviously Harvest Fest, Thornton Fest, the Bike to Work, Fourth of July, et cetera. Um, and recently, we weren't getting a very good response from schools or HOA. So they sent out, the consultant sent out by email, two hundred three connections with HOA in schools and we've gotten more feedback from them. So we have over two hundred responses through survey one, two, three, which is a smartphone app that um maybe you've seen this at some of the some of the places we've been, the community meetings, et cetera. Um, where you can GPS locate, oh, I have a concern here or or this, I want to compliment Park staff for this there or or what about if we did this here? And that's GPS located. Um, we've all also done Survey Monkey with uh using QR codes, everything is in English and Spanish. And um and also paper surveys. In addition, uh we've worked really hard with the rest of the city departments and Active Adult Center, et cetera, uh Community Connections, um we've also done paper surveys. Um, used, we've used the traditional portals for education for the public information awareness with um on the TV monitors at the rec centers, uh twenty-four by thirty-six boards at all the other um areas that information and people go, project website. We also had a Channel Eight video, which was kind of fun. So the next steps, the consultant is wrapping up and checking it twice, all the data. Uh, they're dive up, they're developing criteria on prioritization. And generally, it's a it's a health and safety prioritization, but for this five-year list they're gonna generate. And theoretically, the study is scheduled to be done the end of twenty twenty five. So the next meeting, there'll be the next citywide meeting, it's, we're putting it together for January in twenty twenty five. So you'll receive info about that. And the next stakeholder meeting, which is additional municipalities, Adams County, Weld County, Smart Commute from Dr. Kog, et cetera, that's scheduled in April. And that's it, a quick, quick and easy, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions from council?
So we'll hope to see you at the community meeting.
Thank you very much, I get a lot of positive feedback about this.
Yep.
All right, the next item is the review of and approval of the Consolidated ANL Performance and Evaluation Report for the CDPG program.
Which is continuing, you've had many recent um presentations on uh housing and urban development required processes. This is another, the Consolidated ANL Performance Evaluation Report. And this will also come to you on December seventeen to be uh before submission. So with that, I believe Cheryl is gonna walk you through this.
Good evening, council, and good evening, mayor, um Cheryl Steinberg with uh Community Connections, the Grant and Housing Supervisor. And correct, we are going to going to review the caper. So. So today, we're just gonna take a look at what we accomplished during the twenty-three program year, which starts October first of twenty twenty-three and goes through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So it's a little off of the calendar year, so keep that in mind. We're gonna look at total spending, the housing report, public facilities report, public services report, and our overall performance. We're required to do this every year by HUD. This has been presented to the public and has received a thirty-day comment period. Um, and no comments were received. So during this time, um, this program year of twenty-three, we had one million two hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars available to spend. We spent one million one hundred and one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars of the total funding available, or eighty-eight percent. And those were utilized to execute the assigned activities. So our housing report, we Help for Homes, um, was able to complete eleven homes. Grid Alternatives was provide solar, rooftop solar, completed four homes. Code Cap completed twenty-six homes in its first year. Paint-a-thon did three homes. All total, forty-four homes or fifty-three individuals were assisted in the twenty-three program year with housing. And all of those were considered, were considered, would be considered housing referrals. The Public Facilities Report, um, the Loma Linda Improvement, Park Improvement Project worked at warp speed with a phenomenal project management, was able to be completed in time for our timeliness report. It directly benefits seven hundred and fifty people. The two, last two projects will be completed in twenty-five. They are in progress. It's the McAllister Park Design and the Hundredth and Riverdale Sidewalk Project, a design and then construction. Both of those are expected to complete in twenty-five. The homeless outreach team did a phenomenal job this year, seven hundred and sixty-two unique individual contacts. So they hadn't contacted these folks before, and they were contacted with assistance. Eleven people were housed and they fielded nine, five thousand and nine hotline calls. Um, also with our little bit that we have left, as reported in your council communication, we have a little bit of the COVID funds left, so those have been sent to Almost Home for rent and mortgage assistance programs connected to COVID. Six households were assisted during that year. So let's take a look at our projected results and our actual outcomes. Um, the twenty twenty-four consolidated plan, that's again our five-year plan where we determine our needs and our goals, and then from that, we extract an annual action plan every year. So we're four years into our consolidated plan. And we're already four hundred and thirty-six percent above what we've anticipated accomplishing for public facilities. Home rehab, we're at ninety-six percent of what we projected to complete with a year left. Public services, that's hot in those COVID funds. Hot is at eighty-four percent in these unant- unanticipated COVID funds, with those, we were able to assist five thousand seven hundred and eleven people with those funds. So looking at our twenty-three annual action plan performance, our public facilities that we projected this year is at one hundred percent. The forty-four homes that we rehabilitated is at sixty-five percent of what we anticipated. Public services, uh, with the seven hundred and sixty-two hot contacts are at a hundred and fifty-two percent of what we projected. Or planned for, I should say. So public input, as I mentioned, went from, uh, we'll, we'll see it closed down on December sixteenth. If any, uh, comments do come in at this time, they'll be reported at the December seventeenth meeting. And that is it.
Are there any questions? Are there any concerns with bringing this forward next week? Always very straightforward.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Uh, next is the police chief recruitment process.
This is gonna be me. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity to provide an update. I'm Tansy Giger, the city manager. I do have Amy Agradano and Alicia with, that are here to answer any other questions that I am not able to um, address. I'm gonna move pretty quickly. I know we've got a number of discussion items still on the agenda. So we'll speak briefly just to the outreach and engagement that we plan to include in this, uh, process, a little bit different than I think the last time the city, uh, recruited for a police chief. Um, we'll give a high-level idea of where we plan to go with recruitment and give some sense of the candidate evaluation. Do wanna recognize that the ongoing leadership, um, of our interim police chief, uh, Greg Reeves, who's here as well, and he's been, um, a, a great, um, help in terms of i- identifying this process and assisting as well as we go forward. So first thing that we are gonna do is, uh, front loads and engagement both with members of the police department and the community to help prioritize the kinds of leadership traits that we're looking for in the next police chief, and also, uh, use some of that information, our recruitment brochure, to build a sense of confidence among candidates that they're joining, uh, a, a community and an organization that aligns uh, with their skill sets, with their values, with their goals. And so uh, we will be doing a survey that will be distributed, um, to the community, um, and to leaders across the organization to allow people to give feedback about the kind of experience they think is a priority, the kind of leadership qualities that they would expect in a, in a, a new chief. And across all the surveys, we'll be crowdsourcing the kinds of questions that people believe that we should be speaking with candidates about. We'll also be doing a, a separate, um, uh, survey for members of the police department that's a little bit more refined in terms of their experiences as police officers, those challenges, those opportunities. The things that they think are, are really amazing that they would wanna share with candidates to again build that sense of excitement and confidence, um, amongst potential candidates. We will be, uh, trying to finish up the survey and hopefully getting that out, um, to the, the public um, tomorrow and, uh, running that kind of through the, the holiday season. We're gonna be promoting that in lots of different ways. You can see lots of, um, direct emails that we're gonna try to encourage people to share that within their communities, being, promoting it on our social media. Um, hope, uh, we're hopeful that the, uh, the Sentinel might cover it as well, and then generally it'll be available on our website for people to be able to participate and share their voices. The position itself, uh, we, we've begun some work on recruitment brochure, but we'll wait to finalize it, so we have that feedback from that, that surveys. We'll be, um, finishing that and posting the job in early January. Again, we'll be promoting that very widely across professional organizations that have a national reach. We've also worked on a targeted, uh, email, um, distribution, inviting people to apply, people that are on leadership and leadership roles across the country or that are serving in leadership positions in peer cities, um, uh, locally and across the country. And our goal, um, optimally is, is to have a selection in place by the second quarter of twenty twenty-five. Uh, in terms of candidate evaluation, we really are thinking about this in three different phases. First, um, just review and screening to identify those in- individuals that appear to be, uh, qualified um, in terms of, uh, vetting those candidates. We will, um, identify a group of semifinalists that will use an extensive list of panels to get different perspectives and experiences included. That will include other department directors, uh, that, um, understand the weight of leadership in a director level position. Uh, police chiefs in the area that are familiar with, uh, the issues here. Uh, representatives of the police department, and then, um, a panel that will include community partners. Uh, some of that, uh, formal community partners like healthcare, just, uh, criminal justice, uh, social service, um, alumni of our Citizen Academy, so we, we'll look for a pretty widely representative group to uh, bring a community perspective on those candidates. And then once we get to a, a, a final set, uh, the, a group of final candidates, we will do a town hall so that, uh, the community can meet candidates. And we'll do some other targeted meet and greets, uh, to make sure that we, um, have an opportunity to see the candidates in, uh, a number of different circumstances and make sure that they're gonna align with our organization's values and, and needs. So with that, I can answer any questions. We are, um, excited, uh, to have the opportunity to have a new leader join the team.
Any questions? I know second quarter seems like a long way away, but that feels like a very aggressive timeline, given the number of touchpoints. It, do you think it's doable?
Uh, so we have a very detailed schedule, um, and so we, we are gonna move fast. One of the things that we will do is disclose to candidates at the outset, the, the, um, schedule, so that candidates can, um, can plan from the outset. Uh, I, I will admit, my bias is to move as quickly as possible. The longer a process, um, takes, the more chance you lose candidates to other opportunities. And so uh, we, we did really bring an editing eye to the schedule to make sure that we could move as quickly as possible.
Any objections? Forward to seeing and walk through the process? Thank you. All right, uh, next item is the ward, community and virtual town hall discussion.
Good evening, um. Our, um, I think our last ward meeting is this week, that last meeting of the year, so it's, uh, figured it's appropriate that we start planning for next year. Um, so, uh, what we wanted to do tonight is two things. Basically, just provide a little bit of background of what we did in twenty twenty-four 'cause it, it changed, uh, based on your direction. And then, as I said, really get your direction on which way you wanna go for twenty twenty-five so that we can start the, the planning process. There we go. So I just wanna start off a little bit, um, o- obviously, you, you know how the ward meetings and the community meetings go, but just as a reminder, um, kind of generally the purpose and format of each one as we see it. Obviously, for, starting with award meetings, the intent here is to, to share information primarily through staff presentations. There's, uh, opportunity for Q and A on those, um, presentations, and then, um, typically kind of open Q and A at the end of the meeting. Um, and those have generally been facilitated by you all with, with staff in support. Um, I won't read you, but there, there were the meetings that we've scheduled this year, noting, um, the Ward Three meeting that's, uh, coming up this week. And then just a, a couple of considerations that we thought were, um, worthy to talk about, um, things for you to think about. The, the, the thing about ward meetings is they do allow for these specific kind of program or project highlights. Um, and they provide a, a great forum for a group question to answer on those specific things. Um, they do have, a- as you probably picked up, a little bit more of a formal and business feel to them, um, in comparison to the community meetings, so. Um, for community meetings, again, sharing information, but a- as you know, generally through those department tables, um. And, and I think that op, that provides a little bit more opportunity for a specific question and answer. You know, I've got this particular issue, I'm gonna go seek out this table and, and get my question answered. Um, and so for that reason, we kind of look at them as resident-led, um, obviously staff-supported, but more of that open house format. Um, there's a schedule for this past year when we did them. Um, and again, considerations, you know, allows for a little bit more, um, broad discussion based on your own interests or individual question and answer. And then obviously has a little bit more of an informal and social feel, so. Um, we did wanna talk a little bit about virtual town hall meetings since that's been discussed by council, um, uh, from time to time. Um, we outlined, there's probably more than, than these three options, but we outlined three options, um, for you to consider, um, if you were to pursue a virtual town hall, um, with format, the, uh, option one would be a presentation followed by a question and answer. So ideally, we'd identify a topic or a couple of topics that are relevant to all, to citywide, and then try to solicit questions in advance, um, aligned with those topics, and then provide background information for you all to um, to help moderate and answer some of the questions. Um, option two, really, uh, doesn't have a formal presentation, is more just question and answer, but again, we think it's probably beneficial to try to solicit questions in advance, maybe organize them around a theme. Um, and then provide, um, as best we can, background information for you all. Um, again, moderated, uh, staff have moderated and supported for you all. Then obviously, option three is, uh, no town hall. So we did include some considerations, um, you know, technology and speaking coordination, we need to work through how that question and answer session works, depending on who participates in the virtual town hall, we need to work through um, advertisement, um, making sure that we are meeting, um, accessibility for the community. So I just bring these forward as not things that we need to address now, but if you are to move forward with a virtual town hall, we'd wanna come back and say, you know, hey, here's how we'd suggest that you go out, um, actually administering this thing. So just a couple of, uh, a couple of additional considerations that we wanted to throw out for, for you all before we get to, um, trying to get your direction on what we wanna do next year. Um, typically, we've done, we've scheduled these meetings based on your, um, your individual schedules and availability, and obviously, it's important that you're there. Uh, but we, we did wanna, um, just offer you that trying to focus on maybe that spring and fall timeframe seemed to be a little bit better, avoiding, you know, the summer when people are out on holidays. Um, as well as winter holidays where you, your residents may have other obligations. Um, just as a reminder, I won't read these to you, but these are the current ways we are advertising the ward and community meetings. Um, and then accessibility is something that we've been, um, working on, uh, and, and are working to continue to improve. Um, we added the closed captioning and language translation via phones. Um, we added, uh, ability to do hearing impaired assistance, which is, uh, really beneficial for the ward meetings. I know at the last, um, I think it was at the Ward Two meeting, we had some challenges with that, but I think we've worked through those, so um, hoping for, uh, have a success at, uh, the meeting this week. Um, and then the, uh, one other thing about format, obviously, these are your meetings, so we're really gonna defer to you about how you want to manage them, but the the question cards that I think it was used in Ward Two's meeting, I thought there was some, really some benefit to the way you guys structured that, and so, you know, moving forward, again, they're your meetings, but that's something I thought was worth, you know, considering for other ward meetings, 'cause it seemed to um, help improve the flow, particularly the question and answer, and moving from the presentations to the, to the audience, uh, portion of it. So, um, the last slide here before just get your direction. Um, we, we broke down kind of three options. Again, there's probably a million options, um, but option one is basically what you did this year. It's basically one ward meeting, um, per ward and one community meeting per ward. So two meetings per ward, eight meetings total. Got that math right? Uh, and that's what we did this year. Option two is, uh, two of either kind, kind of choose your adventure. If you wanna do two ward meetings, do two ward meetings. If you wanna do one of each, like we did, you, you know, you guys can decide. And then option three is choose one of option two or option three and add on a virtual town hall if, if you are so inclined. And then obviously, there's, like I said, a myriad of options, um, but given, again, where to finish where I started, given that we just kind of wrapped up this year, and this year, we, we transitioned, uh, back into ward meetings, and there, the there had been the discussion about virtual town halls, we just wanted to check them with you and see what you wanted to do, if there are any of those options look good for you, or if you wanted to pursue something different.
I like option one with one virtual town hall. So that's three, yeah. And then I also wanted to say, we still, 'cause I didn't use it this year, but I'm, I was gonna try and use it this year, but it's just getting too hectic with the holidays, but we still have our tw- two hundred dollar budget if we wanna have like a separate meeting too.
Yes.
That in January, but just putting that out there sort of, remember. But yeah, that's my pick.
Jessica?
Um, I have a question. I, you know, having both now experienced both of the community and the ward meeting. Still wonder if there's a way to combine them, because not everybody enjoys sitting there for those entire meetings and waiting for their one question to be answered or one topic to listen to. A way to combine where you have maybe thirty minutes or forty-five of the ward presentation and the rest of the time, just the community meeting with first type fare that was still going on for those who don't wanna attend or who only wanted to listen to one part of the presentation and then go get other things from the other parts of the staff? Or is that way too much of that?
So it'd be like a hybrid, basically, right? You do the, you do the community meeting, but the first portion of the community meeting is you've got some dedicated topic that you're trying to present to everybody. Is that, is that the intent, Councilmember Sangre?
Yeah, and, and obviously you have it in a separate area because it's also just loud in there, so you wouldn't necessarily have it in the same section, but nearby, adjacent, in a tent, whatever. Um, because there, you know, people like both, uh, and for Ward Two, I still see more people coming to the community than I do the ward meetings, and that's been my, my experience, my entire council. Um, I know that's not necessarily the same for every ward, but I hear basically from a lot of people that's like both, but they also don't like to sit there for the entire meeting waiting for their one question to be answered. So yeah, I guess a hybrid.
Okay. Well, what I'd what I'd suggest is that if if council has an interest in pursuing that, what I'd ask is for some opportunity for us to go back and kind of think through the logistics of how that would work and the impact on how we'd plan it out. But I think it's probably a possibility. I just would like the opportunity to talk to folks about it and not answer on the fly here, if that's okay.
Yeah, that makes sense. And I'm not in favor of a meeting. I think we already have too many and for us to already be now in December, a week and a half outside of Christmas, I don't think that's a use of anyone's time, including the staff. So I'm really not in favor of adding another meeting. So I'm I'm good with one or two.
Others?
Mayor's State of the City, and then I'm okay with that.
Justin and Chris.
Yeah, I've been able to attend many of these meetings and, you know, from my experience, I guess I went to the both Ward One meetings and the Ward Four meetings. And in both cases, the 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 ward meetings had much larger attendance than the community meetings, especially the Ward Four meeting. I mean, there was well over 100 people there at that Ward Four meeting. And and I think there is a significant interest in the community to have these ward meetings in addition to the community meetings. Given the attendance that we had. I think combining them will could could lead to, you know, if either a really long meeting or people's questions not even not even having the opportunity to ask the question. Because if we spend, you know, only, we only have a certain amount of time to conduct the meeting, so if we're spending time, you know, that's not dedicated to question the answers, then given the attendance that we've had at many of these meetings, I think people are likely to be left out and not even have. So it's not even a situation they have to wait till the end, but the meeting will end before they their question gets answered. So I really do see the value of having the two the two meetings. And, you know, I would I would welcome a town hall meeting as well. You know, especially i- if we're going to combine meetings and a town hall meeting would be a virtual town hall would be another avenue for somebody to ask their questions. And yeah, these meetings are going to go long and and people stay to the very end. So that to me shows that they're committed to hearing what other questions are and getting their question answered. I mean, the the attendance numbers speak for themselves. So I would be in favor of, you know, keeping the format that we had this year and adding a virtual town hall to give more access to getting your questions answered.
Chris?
I'm a big, I'm a big fan of having both award and the community because I think they should serve such different purposes in the ward meetings. The residents that attend those and they're, like Justin mentioned, highly attended, especially in my ward. But it geographically gets people to that meeting because they want to know what's happening in their actual location of where they live and reside. I'm not on the other end of town all that often, with the exception of business or a need of some sort. So having a good idea of what's happening locally, you know, between my house and the highway, which is the, you know, what we get out of those out of those ward meetings because the city is so diverse. So I'm good with option three as well. I think the virtual town hall meeting is an opportunity to have more one-on-one from council to the community with direct lines questioning. We haven't done it before in the past, so perhaps this year we just try it out and see how that one goes. And if it's, if we can suffice with the other eight meetings throughout the city, then maybe it's not something to do in the future, but I'd be open to getting more on that personal Q and A with residents as a council member.
I just wanted to add, the reason I'm a fan of the virtual town hall addition is I've had residents reach out because of accessibility issues. The virtual town hall is needed for that. And that's all I have to say.
Is a clarifying question of Councilmember Russell, just because I think we we did commit that if if you, there was interest in a town hall, we'd have to follow back up on sort of technology and structure considerations. Want to make sure that I'm just understanding, there there is technology that allows you to like go into specific rooms. Because I think that in that what we have envisioned, there'd be a a single virtual town hall. So I think if there's interest in council members having the opportunity in that town hall to interact with individual residents, we we would, and do I misunderstand?
Yeah, that's that's, no, it would be the one general room. But individuals then could speak to us. We don't need to have breakouts or anything like that. So
Okay.
Kind of, you know, what Rob was mentioning earlier, I would think, you know, perhaps we could use the council chamber and we have all the equipment and things in there to do it. And if somebody wanted to direct questions specifically at certain council members, we could interact that way, but it would just be, there'd be no breakout sessions, just one where we all have more like a fireside chat or a panel.
Westminster's been doing them, so maybe we can.
Okay, yeah.
So Aurora started doing virtual town halls based on wards. And so the wardmates would do it together because when they found when they did it one with everybody, it got really hard to manage. But if they had two people that were connected by a ward, it was a lot easier to manage. And I think they have two at-large council members, and so they did their virtual town hall together. So that might be an alternative as well, instead of having nine of us on a panel that can get overwhelming for those watching. Maybe a virtual board meeting instead of just an in-person one as an idea.
Wouldn't be opposed to that as long as there was some way of recapping or, you know, since we do have the audio video equipment. Because I enjoy the classroom settings, you know, maybe somebody is asking a question in in Ward Two that we'd all or other residents would like to hear that information. So that's
We can call into the board, the virtual meeting. We did them during COVID. We did virtual ward meetings during COVID.
Okay.
They were cool.
Tony?
I'm in favor of option one. And and since we began the community meetings, I've attended all the community meetings because they're open to to everybody. And and I've actually run into more people from Ward Three wanting to speak with me at another ward's community meeting than than just the one in Ward four three we had alone. So I I think the productivity of giving the residents each each ward two opportunities or eight opportunities is really, really important that we give them as much opportunity to meet and and discuss items with us. And I, as I say, I'm in favor of option one.
Karen?
I would love to see option three with option one, added option one. I really do appreciate having the community meetings in each ward, and then I really, really appreciate having a ward meeting in each ward. From the feedback I've gotten from our residents, they really like having those two different types of meetings because they have more engagement, obviously, at the ward meeting where they can have open Q and A. And then at the community meetings, it's more a little bit of everybody from all wards mixing together. But I'd love to see a virtual town hall of either type on top of those two meetings.
David, if you want to add?
I agree with Tony. I'm good with option one.
So there is consensus for option one, to stick to the plan we had this year. I think on the virtual town hall, there's one, two, three, four people that have said they're interested. Four either haven't said anything or are against it. So maybe there's an opportunity to get more information. And maybe doing the Aurora model where it's two council members, what that could look like versus nine of us, what that could look like so that we could understand the impact of on us as well as the make sure the community members could actually hear it and see it.
We can, we can follow up. I I do think from a workload, many of these end up being in evening or weekend. And so I am a little bit conscientious if we were to move to
Four more virtual meeting?
You know, 12 additional, you know, four additional night meetings for staff, depending on the format of the town halls. I know the community meetings, which are, I went to my my first one at Trail Winds and it was a lot of fun. They are very staff intensive in terms of the number of staff that are there, which is great. That's what makes the experience. So I think we we can certainly calibrate sort of what what the potentials with the virtual town hall and bring that back and balance sort of the council benefit, community benefit and the staff resources necessary for that.
Does that work for everybody?
Or just like an option of what one big town hall, but like I could, yeah, doing four of them sounds kind of
It sounds like overwhelming.
Yeah. Yeah. Like just one bigger, because it just says virtual town hall meeting, add one citywide virtual town hall meeting to option one. Or option two, right?
We can make it whatever, right? Though, so it's, I think the question is whether or not we would have smaller ones or we would have one big one, and that's more information to understand what that might look like. There's also the alternative of doing a ward meeting virtually. So instead of having everybody come to it, doing it virtually instead and making that a town.
Yeah, I like keeping it the way it is though, so it's kind of hard. I think the only the only sneak peekers from people if they want some way to attend something virtually, maybe even if it were just, I don't know. Just some way to get information virtually because there's people that can't leave their house or have like mobility, transportation issues. So I don't know.
I think there's been really good discussion about.
Sorry, Jessica, hang on just one second. Let Tansy finish.
I I think there's been a really good discussion about a variety of goals that we might meet with a virtual town hall. Let us do some more research about what the technology options and what other cities have tried and see what we can learn from others and and come come back.
Did you have a follow-up question, Jessica?
I was just going to ask if one of the options could be having the actual ward meeting online as well, like a hybrid.
I think that's one of the things they're going to look at.
Yep, thank you.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the discussion regarding the strategic planning conference. Take a break after this one.
We're gonna stick with Rob Colstead and thank you to everybody. I think this is the first time in my career that we've had 100% of experience, 100% participation in a survey for feedback about a council retreat. So thank all of you for your great feedback and Rod is gonna dive into some of the feedback we heard from you and some of the feedback we we'd still like to have moving forward to get a beneficial retreat for all of us.
Yeah, so thank you. Really looking for feedback on kind of three specific things. Location, date, and then the agenda, which really is kind of conceptual at this point. So we're really talking about goals. But again, to reiterate what Tansy said, that your feedback on the survey was very helpful in kind of developing, at least in the straw man, to get your reaction to. So without further, regarding location, the here are the results from the survey. So it was five preferred to go offsite. Three preferred to stay locally. We included, just for your reference, what we've done in, I guess, the last nine years or so. You can see it's kind of bounced around. Obviously, there was a pandemic in there. But have done a little bit of both. And so the the survey is not binding, but we are looking for some direction from you all on if your your preferences towards truly is towards going offsite or or going locally. I think I'll just pause here and get your feedback on that.
Is there any huge objection to going offsite since that seems to be the majority?
I don't have an objection. I think it's a good idea.
Chris? Sorry, Justin.
Obviously, I'd have, I know there's a number of you that have been on council for a number of years. I guess what are what are some of the benefits of going offsite, you know?
Less distraction. If we go offside, then we can spend more time together at dinner and other more socializing and interaction together. Whereas if it's locally
Do that really, though?
We have in the past.
I would, I would disagree with that. Okay.
I mean, it depends on what the council wants to do. When we have gone out before, when we went to Clara Springs, we sat at the bar together when we went before most of us did. But when we went to Stanley, the Stanley Hotel, we all actually did stuff together. And that was before any of you guys were on council. So it it depends.
Okay, I'm gonna do a follow-up question with our new city manager. I'm assuming you've experienced both. And do you see a better benefit to one or the other in your experience?
So I think there are benefits of both. So in in Raleigh, you would have seen a similar trajectory. Sometimes they were offsite, sometimes they were onsite. I do think there there generally, I think it is my experience that people are more willing to commit to like evening activities and those kinds of things when it's offsite. I think when when it's local, there, my, I guess my personal impression is that there is a little bit of pressure on the day. People have other just the the realities of home being right there for people. It did not come up as a high priority in your survey. One of the other benefits I've seen on some offsite retreats is sometimes incorporating some tours or other interactions with the host city to to do some broader relationship building or kind of learning. Just adds, many of us for our occupations, you you go to a conference away or a retreat or away kind of just broadens your perspective, puts you in a different environment outside of your routine. So if there's a benefit of being, you know, offsite, I think those are some of the I I think a facilitator would would give you some of those same considerations for the benefits of being offsite. Takes you outside of your normal routine and your 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 normal environment.
I have Justin and then Karen.
Christopher question.
Any follow-up, Justin?
I want to know the benefits so I can, you know, I mean, I'm gonna have to you know, negotiate with my wife.
That would be a challenge.
Just gone away for a week and now we got another one, so there better be some good benefits. Very skeptical, so thanks for highlighting those.
And depending on where we go, sometimes family members come with.
Yeah.
Then he won't get any sleep.
Whose benefits are we talking about here?
Karen? That's hilarious. So I think there's benefits to both, honestly. I I agree that getting away can be beneficial because of the evening activities and being away from family and being away from other work obligations, et cetera. I think the biggest concern for us last year that was discussed was the cost. So I think that I want to discuss what the cost would be because is that being fiscally responsible of us to get hotel rooms, not just for us, but the entire staff? I'm pretty sure, I don't know what the cost was in Colorado Springs, but it had to be really expensive. So I would just like to know how much the cost would be because, you know, what otherwise, A, did we budget for that? Because I don't know that we did. And B, is there somewhere else we should be utilizing those dollars that would be more fiscally responsible of us?
So you're asking a policy question, which is really unique for you all to answer that question. We do have funding available. There's still decisions to be made in terms of what the agenda items are and the staff that would be necessary to support that. I know the experience has been different here in Dorton. In other places where there was travel, really only the staff that was specifically engaged in the agenda traveled for those kinds of things from a cost perspective. And and again, this is a a policy question for you. I I do think one of, not to spoil Rob's presentations, one of the highest priorities that was really across the board for you for this retreat was your strategic plan. Your strategic plan really is an investment in the future and probably is in terms of, you know, not to be too touchy-feely, you know, the consensus and a vision from the council that shared with the staff that creates a long-term vision that everybody can feel good about and work towards. It would be hard for me to value that in terms of, because ultimately, the work the working relationship and the shared vision for you is really irreplaceable by any other kind of activity of the city. Now, we, that is gonna be the objective of a retreat, whether it's local or um somewhere else, but um, I, I do think that healthy communication, healthy um relationships and a shared vision are really critical for high-performing organizations.
Regarding?
I was gonna say what she said. Well, I mean, it's just, you know, I used to think that like, we need to spend some time, like, as a group, getting to know each other better, and I think it works. When we, when we know each other as humans outside of policymaking and politics, it works better for the city, and if we have human connections and our, you know, our people and our cities see that, and they see that we're working together more cohesively. Um, being away from here and experiencing things together as humans makes our, um, I get real woo-woo about this stuff, but it makes our, you know, our ability to work together better, and then we are we're just a more cohesive unit as a council, making policy when we get to those points where, you know, I think that's been part of the, honestly, that's been part of the challenges with the council that I've seen, is like, there hasn't been those human interactions, and then when you can't connect as humans, then you're not able to work together, so I'd like to see us be able to do that. We may, may not all agree on everything politically or whatever, fiscally, whatever those things are, but we can have interactions together that are genuine and human and meet each other where we're at and be together as people and then break bread and then be able to create policy, that makes that a better process, so that's my, that's just my soapbox on that, so I, I think it's totally worth it. You know, people might say it's a waste of money or whatever, I don't see it that way, because when people can work together, then they can work together for their city, so I, I, I strongly believe in it.
Given the fact that you would have to convince somebody that it is valuable to the council, um, maybe an option would be, because I, reading ahead on the slides, we may have to change a date to see what options there are available for a date that we have, what that might cost, what those options might be, and an alternative would be in the city. Because I felt like last year we did it in the city, but we did miss a lot of that human interaction piece, for sure.
We did. Sorry, did you just say that we have to change the date?
Well, that's a potential discussion further in the slides, we haven't got to that slide yet, but.
Okay, we can come back with quantify what those choices would be.
So the, the next uh survey question was date, um, uh, Friday to Sunday, uh, the three-day affair, or Friday to Saturday. Um, the majority of you all, uh, heard the Friday to Saturday. Uh, did note that not everybody's available to attend the dates that we've identified, which is a reminder, are um January thirty-first to February first, so um we're looking for your direction, you know, kind of assuming that it is a Friday or Saturday, but do you want to look at alternative dates? Um, uh, I, I just will say, we, we can poll you for new dates, um. Sometimes there's a challenge, uh, we've done this a lot, um. Sometimes there's a challenge with March because of NLC and spring, people have spring breaks and those kind of things. Um, I, I go out of February, maybe we don't have this issue anymore, but I still remember always competing against Heidi Williams' birthday, Valentine's Day, and the Super Bowl, uh, which I'm like, guys, there's only four weekends in February.
We don't have the first one anymore.
Yeah, don't have the first one anymore, um, so maybe there's a time in February, I, I don't know what your all's schedule looks like, and then, then you're into April, and I, I know there was some interest in trying to do this, and, and we share that, this perspective, trying to, trying to not, trying to do it sooner rather than later, so. Um, I guess from, from, from our standpoint, we're looking for your direction on, do you want to stick to these dates, or do you want us to try to poll you for different dates?
I don't remember the dates, can you remind me the dates?
Uh, Ja- the current dates are January thirty-first to February first, Friday to Saturday.
And not everyone's available, right?
That's correct.
Karen?
I'm one of ones that's not available.
Um, a whole weekend?
The whole weekend. Um, you know, I, I'll go along, obviously, with whatever everybody decides, but if we could do February, I think that'd be great, I don't think we should go past February. Um, because March is a problem, and I do think April was just too late in the game. Not that night. We'll all be divorced.
Um, maybe a new poll with three options, the original option and two others, and then we'll tell whatever works for the most.
Maybe earlier than, yeah.
Could be, yeah.
Later, it sounds like, so.
Moving it up from the current dates?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I have the Metro Mayor's Retreat on the twenty-fifth of January, all day.
So we are interviewing facilitators right now, we can certainly check availability, that there is gonna be some practical part of uh scoping that and, and giving them enough time for design, but, but we can cer- we are uh, this week interviewing facilitators, so we, we can certainly see if that, if there's an ability to accommodate a faster schedule.
So I think what I heard is poll for February and see what, see if something better pops up.
The original date in there has an option still, just in case.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so the, the, the next question was um your survey agenda topics, and so I, you can see kind of what rose to the top, the top four strategic planning, financial outlook and strategy, thoughts from the manager, planning for the future, um, the, the rest of these, I think there's probably aspects to integrate into other parts of the presentation, or, or different, um, um, different planning sessions, maybe even some of the pre-work, again, this is conceptual at this point, so based on your feedback, um, here's what we came up with as kind of a conceptual agenda, again, we, we're, we're not, this isn't set in stone or anything, and, and as Tanzi said, we're, we're still interviewing, um, facilitators, so how, um, uh, they may have some suggestions of this, but again, assuming a two, assuming a two-day, uh, two-day retreat, we s- we thought that day one would be, uh, best spent um, planning for the future, uh, I won't read you the, the the simple ones here, but again, the outcome is kind of just to set the stage, you know, you're, we're going away, we're thinking long-term vision for the future, for the community, and so in my experience, like, starting the day off with something that kind of gets us out of our normal day-to-day rhythm and really gets us in the mindset of, okay, what, what are we here to do, we're here to plan for the, the long-term future of the city, so something, uh, to be determined, uh, but that gets us in that, in that mindset. Um, and then the, the second piece of day one, since it was very important to you all, was, uh, to have that financial discussion. Um, again, the, the outcome, in my mind, is, is similar to what we've done, partially similar to what we've done in the past, which is kind of a resetting of where we are financially, and it serves as a kickoff to the budget process and where we are and where we think we're going. Um, but we also thought it'd be a, a good opportunity to, um, to have a, a, a more robust, uh, discussion about our overall financial management strategy approach. You know, how we, the rationale behind that, a managing of opportunities and risk, and, and really engage council in that discussion to, um, um, to, uh, and to solidify where we want to go from a financial management standpoint, so a little bit maybe more than, than what we've done in previous retreats, just kind of just an update on where we are and where we think we're going financially. Um, so that's, uh, concept day one, um, day two, uh, we would, uh, the, the balance of day two would really be focused on the strategic planning effort, I mean, really almost all of the day. Um, again, I, I won't read the, the bullets to you, but the outcome here is, in, in our mind, is to build off the foundational work that we did this year, um, which was really mission, vision, values, uh, strategic themes, um, and set the foundation for developing a, and completing a strategic plan, um, that's actionable, that's measurable, that can guide, um, investment decisions moving forward, and, and something that we, you know, would, would use the retreat to really set the direction for that. Um, likely, there would be some work that after the retreat that staff would do to kind of fill out, um, put some meat on the bones of the plan, and then bring it back to you all for discussion, but, um, that's kind of in my mind, that, that's kind of the crucible point of, of this retreat, and it's, um, it was good to see that that was really the highest priority for you all in, in the survey. Um, and then we thought we'd finish with, um, uh, thoughts from, thoughts from Tanzi, again, perspective on been here, what, six weeks, and by this point, we'll be here by, for like twelve weeks or something like that, so, um, but, uh, some good observations, an opportunity to discuss some issues with, uh, Tanzi, so. That's kind of the, the concept, um, we're, you know, looking open to your feedback on, you know, whether that meets the needs, that needs and expectations of, of what you're hoping to accomplish with the retreat. Um, and then I just, just real quickly, the next steps. Obviously, um, I think we gotta come back with some additional logistical details to nail down the, the when and where. Um, I did, um, Tanzi mentioned it, um, we are interviewing, um, facilitators, uh, I think we've got six interviews this week, some good folks. Um, Jerry indicated he didn't, uh, he wasn't gonna continue working with us, and so we're looking for somebody to step in and, and move us forward based on the good work that he did. Um, and then obviously finalize and distribute the agenda, so. Um, we've tended to reserve some time in January, um, kind of assuming those dates, potentially for some pre-work, at minimum, some logistical details, so everybody knows what they're doing. Um, so that's kind of the next steps, and be happy to answer any questions, particularly on the, um, conceptual agenda.
Karen?
I just wanted to say thank you both so much, I, I really like the conceptual agenda, I'm thrilled we're looking at a strategic plan, um, and just appreciate your work on this.
Justin?
So, I guess it might depend on the facilitator, but to what degree are we going to follow the balanced scorecard? Or, um, I know you mentioned you want to build on that work that we did before. Are we, are you, from your perspective, are you committed to that same framework, or you want to build on it by going a different approach?
Sure.
Yeah, so, um, we are, as we talk with facilitators, that is one of the things that we're asking each of the facilitators, how much history and background do they have with balanced scorecard? We actually have a call, I believe, the day after tomorrow with Glendale, Arizona. Um, uh, balanced scorecard isn't as heavily used by cities any longer. We really, and I think some of the understanding that I have from a call I had with Jerry that he shared with you, uh, there is a pretty big, uh, procedural commitment to balanced scorecard. Uh, I have talked with, um, managers in several cities that had formerly used balanced scorecard and have, um, continued to employ some of the most significant, uh, practices, but aren't, um, specifically using that framework any longer. So I, I think we're a little shy of knowing the answer to that, so uh, Glendale is the first city of kind of similar size and complexity that we've got ninety minutes to understand how they support that plan over time, and I think after that call, after that call and after the, the, uh, can the remaining calls with the facilitators, we'll probably have a richer, um, answer for that. I think it is, the one thing that I can say with assurance is, um, those swim lanes that are prioritized in balanced scorecard in terms of thinking about your, your human capital, your customers, financial aspects, and there's a fourth that I'm not gonna remember, there are four kind of considerations that you build into your strategies. Certainly, those would be, uh, things that would be, um, prioritized in terms of the kinds of initiatives, to make sure that we were balanced across all of those considerations. And we, we do want a goal that is going to have, um, measurable outcomes, and, um, I, I wouldn't necessarily use the term scorecard, but we have talked about, uh, dashboards and other fine things that can demonstrate, uh, performance and success over time, both for the, the council, for us as a management tool, and then for our transparency goal, so what, I don't know whether that, um, our recommendation will be balanced scorecard to meet those, or a different methodology that meets those same objectives. If it's a priority for the council, um, to, um, specifically use balanced scorecard, there is a, a, a much, I think we're finding there's a smaller universe of facilitators that specifically are, are familiar with that, um, uh. We're talking, everybody that we have, have deep experience in strategic planning, just many of them don't specifically use that methodology.
Okay, yeah, I, I think, you know, the, it's not the framework that's super critical, but that we continue to build off of what we already, already created, and, you know, it might not even be the right tool for us, given our resources and, and what we're committed to, but I think there's, there are certain core elements that we can, uh, maintain, essentially what we did last, this year.
If we have, wait a minute, follow up?
That's great, can I make one other just quick announcement that's not on the agenda, I just wanted to make sure that council knew, um, probably by early next week, given that we do have a special election coming, I'm used to sharing some guidance with city staff about, um, protocols and expectations while there's an active, um, um, election process, so we are gonna be working on something with the city attorney's office to distribute that to um, uh, our employees, to make sure that they're set up for success in terms of preserving appropriate roles. Um, wh- while we head into election season, we are gonna be also reaching out to candidates to start providing um, them with similar information about appropriate activities and the expectations of candidates as they proceed, so next week, we, we will try to launch both of those communication efforts ahead of, um, the holiday season. Thank you.
I think that'll be very helpful. All right, so I'd like to take a break, the only other item we have on the agenda is the executive session, but any board committee reports real quick? That we haven't given already? Or any discussion items real quick that we need before we take a break? Your commissioning reports?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, I'll be real quick. We are a couple of ways, the most important one, I think everybody here should know, is that, um, throughout the year, the Dr. Cog board has approved, um, a new, uh, economic development district advisory committee, which is gonna be led by the director of partnership development, partnership development and innovation. And so our economic department, uh, you know, some notes from, from Kent is that our economic development department supports this initiative. Um, the economic development district advisory committee is a part of a comprehensive economic development strategy, and it supports strong partnerships that the communities in our region already have established. And so this is gonna be an important tool to help us, you know, bring out all the resources that we can and, and have a, a better and stronger role in the region as economic development goes, and the board is going to be, you know, of actually a lot, a very diverse group of people, including, uh, Dr. Cog board members, um, executive directors of nonprofits that are specifically focused on economic development and workforce development, also economic development directors from different economic uh, development organizations around the, the region. And, um, I'm going to, uh, run for the, one of the positions for the Dr. Cog board members. It's, I think it's gonna be fairly competitive, so I don't know how it's gonna go, but I'm certainly gonna try to have a, a stronger representation for Thornton on that board, so.
Right?
Yeah.
Fantastic. You need anything from us tonight?
Um, no, just, uh.
To be determined?
Cheer me on, I guess. The, and, uh, yeah, that's pretty much it for the all the stuff that you really want to hear.
Uh, any discussion items? All right, let's take, uh, Tammy.
Yeah, I just wanted to say for your electronic participation policy, the two folks on the phone can vote to go into exec session, but they can't participate in the executive session. And we would have a quorum whether you drop off or not, so.
So I've got two discussion items, um, very short, I promise. The first one is, I think that a, a resident discovered an error on their website, on the boards and commissions uh, website, and this is, list J-Rac as an active board and commission, which it is no longer. I haven't verified that myself, but that was a, a complaint that I got from a resident, and so I think that we should update that, make sure that we have that accuracy there. And then the, the other issue I had, I wanted to bring up is, um, we called, we had the NIOH, uh, challenge that we approved a few weeks ago. Um, we do, as a sponsor, get two slots as judges, and I wanted to, um, let you all know, I would really like to be a judge on that, considering it's the Thornton Shopping Center Project Award One, and uh, I've been working with the, the NIOH people from day one, bringing this to the city, so I'd like to see this through and, and, uh, be a member, uh, be a judge on that. And so, yeah, we have to, I think I'll agree on who we want to send from the city as sponsors to be a judge. And so, yeah, we have to, I think all agree on who we wanna send from the city as sponsors to be a judge. I think it makes sense to have the only representative for Ward One on that. So that's what I'm asking.
Any objection?
None. I talked with Justin about that, and he and I both worked that in the beginning in that background in real estate. So I thought it would be of interest for myself to join him on that. We talked about it, unless somebody else has an interest.
We can have two people?
Yeah, we can have two judges.
I would just ask you to bring the information back and keep us posted on how it's going.
Okay. I, I, I was so excited. I brought it up now. I think we're gonna get more information.
Okay.
Uh, a week from today. Well, just wait.
All right. Um, so uh, Jessica and Tony, you can either drop off now if you want while we take a break, or you can hang on for the vote in a minute when we get back from the break to go into executive session. It's your choice. So we will take a break now.